We're spending this. It's looking good, so they won't need any supplement. They get a little bit of revenue, and I think that's from some work you guys do for the city of Omaha.
The city of Omaha.
And the great majority of their budget is for payroll as the one hundred and eighty-five thousand of the two fifty. And with that kind of as intro, now I'll turn it over to Terry to talk about the specifics of the department.
Basically, what our department does is we prep all the documents from city and county. We get it ready for scanning. And from there, the images are scanned, it's sent to an archive writer where we end up creating rolls of film. Some of the departments that don't need to have rolls of film done, they're having their stuff scanned and sent out to file bound. And then we end up processing rolls. We read the rolls to make sure that they meet the state statutes. And then we make a direct dupe roll. From there, the direct dupe roll goes to the offices. And then a security roll is sent down to Hutchinson, Kansas, to be stored in the salt mines. We also have ended up bringing in a couple of other departments, which is kind of giving us more of a backlog. And then I had a lady that just recently retired, and we were down one employee for like two months before I got somebody hired. And that has pushed back a little bit further. So what I am requesting for my budget is to hire an additional person to help get the backlog brought back up to... Back up to, you know, so we can get, as things are coming in, we can get it out just as fast.
Mark, any questions?
Are we being compensated adequately by the city of Omaha? And when I ask that question, I mean including the benefits that our employees get.
Yes. For the services that we do for them, it is just, the filming that, or the scanning that's done for the city of Omaha is, I have a project that I do for Councilman Grenat, and then for permits and inspections. Outside of that, the other revenue that I, that comes in is for the storage costs that we have down in Hutchinson from back in the seventies.
Hudson, Kansas?
Huh?
Hudson, Kansas?
Hutchinson, Kansas, in the salt mines.
You've never been in the salt mines?
So, do you, can, can we, can you do what you need to do by just giving you money for a tentative work instead of putting somebody on long term?
We could probably work something.
That's what I was gonna ask, is it a six month, a year, just to get caught up and then see where we're at?
Yeah, just to see where we're at. I mean, if we can't, you know, if I can't do like a full time for a while, I, we could try and see how it would work with a part-time employee. How, yeah, how things would work on that aspect.
Mr. Friend?
Thank you, John Friend, for the record, clerk of the district court. Hopefully, I am a valued customer of our imaging service down here. And here's the other side of this whole thing on the imaging deal. Every entity that produces any government paperwork is assigned a records retention schedule. All the court stuff is on record retention schedule, eight from the state secretary of state's office, records management division. And all of my stuff is permanent record, which means I can never get rid of it. Lots of people, like county courts, two years, because it's more turn and burn, eighteen months. Our stuff is forever. And we literally have a half of a football field on sea level downstairs, which now is full. And we're struggling to try to get that stuff imaged and on microfilm. And so we've been working really hard, and I gotta tell you, they do an outstanding job, they have outstanding customer service. I've been down there, I've seen the operation, it's very effective, it's very efficient. I would strongly, strongly recommend that you put a full-time person down there that we can control and put to this, because I don't think, at this stage of the game, she'll ever actually catch up. But there could be an acceptable limit of, of being two months behind, three months behind. I have years and years of work to be done, and I'm just getting to the point to where I'm starting to move boxes out, until the court goes paperless sometime within our working lifetime. If that happens, it'll cure a lot of this problem. But even the records that I have down there, a half of a football field stacked to the ceiling of the sea level, that has to be imaged and put on microfilm, or I have to keep the record. Here's an issue, rains, storms, floods down there, I'm still responsible to keep those records. And I'd rather have them either on file bound. Here's another issue. You put that on file bound. Right now, currently, revenue-wise, I think I get, it's a, it's a pit, it's twelve hundred a month, maybe, fourteen hundred a month, with title companies and certain, some of the larger attorneys, firms, that pay me to go in and get the small archive pieces that I have that's currently in file bounds, like eighty-seven and like ninety-four. And they pay to go in there and get the stuff, so they don't have to send a runner down to the courthouse to do that. Imagine the revenue that we could sell if I was able to put that on file bound, at least pay the storage cost of file bound, if not, make revenue off of it, with a lot of people that wouldn't even have to come down. Eighty, remember this date, April thirteenth, oh-six, oh-eight, everything's on justice, all images. Before that, from oh-eight, April eighteenth, oh-eight, back to the eighties, when we started imaging, it should all be on file bound. Now, can't be public, because there's a lot of issues, as all the attorneys would know. All the old stuff, it's got social security numbers, financial document accounts, financial numbers that probably shouldn't be public. But there could be certain groups of folks that we could generate revenue off of, that we could vet and give them a password to file bound and do that. So she does need, her capacities weigh out script than the need for that service. It's a critical function, I think it needs to happen.
Let me ask you a question, when you talk about revenue, do you have the ability to charge now, is it so small?
Yes, I am, but it's very small.
Okay, so you're saying we need to go to the legislature and say, make it more?
No.
With his hand.
Because they don't have anything on justice that's previous to two thousand and eight. Why?
Who sets the fees?
I do.
Oh, why can't you raise them?
I can, I did, went from a hundred to a hundred and twenty-five, it's not worth it. I had twenty people, now I got twelve, because they figured it out that there's not that much on there. But the more I put on there, the more I can generate, the more I can sell it. Sell the process of Q-TAC rock not having to come across the street or bear at home or whatever. They give two or three passwords to their clerks, they can get on there and scrape off anything they want. Trusted folks.
Let me ask, somebody can answer this question. What is the basis of using this kind of material? I mean, when was this law written that says it has to be on file bound, is that what it's called?
Well, it's a durable medium definition the state puts out. Currently, the durable medium definition is you either have to have the paper available for anybody to see, or it's gotta be on microfilm, because, you know, you used to have five and a half inch floppies, then you went to three and a half inch. Now you're a thumb drive, now, you know, you can put it on remote servers. And, and they are coming up with a durable medium definition, which will allow us to use file bound. That's got instant failover, they got a place in, in, I think it's Lincoln or Denver, and they have a place here. So if the place burns down here, we immediately switch over to the place in Denver, and all of our stuff's up and running, we lose nothing.
Well, I am the most un-computer person in the building, but what about the cloud? I mean, what is the deal? Are we lagging behind in technology? I understand what, I understand what you're saying about hard copy. Surely, this would be a better approach then, and wouldn't it be a lot quicker if we used the cloud instead of all this microfilming stuff?
We actually had a few pills, since I've been on the board, about changing that, like the method of microfilming versus tapes or CDs or whatever. And the legislature has always X-nated that, because long-term, they know microfilm is...
Long-term storage.
If it, if it, if the microfilm is stored right, your microfilm will last for, for at least a hundred and fifty years. So like, if, let's say, well, I can tell you right now, I got a call from a youth center.
Brad Alexander.
From Brad, and I had to recall a couple of rolls of film from Hutchinson, that, that a judge needed information from Nico Jenkins. Now, needless to say, I ended up printing off a nice two reams of paper.
Let me ask you a question, I mean, I, I know what you're saying, that that worked and all the rest of it, but surely that would work with the cloud?
I think it will, and I think that'll enhance as we go along, but right now, I just don't know if, it's gotta go somewhere. It's gotta go to some box, somewhere that is retrievable, I'm sure it is in the cloud, but the cloud hooks to a box anyway.
Well, I mean, the thing is, I don't know anything about how you get it on the cloud, but it seems like it'd be a hell of a lot easier than all this microfilming.
Cloud, nothing but a room full of servers.
Sorry?
Cloud, nothing but a room full of servers, they just, it's not housed with you.
Right.
But I'm just saying, I mean, it seems like it'd be a heck of a lot better way to do this than microfilm. When was this law written, you know, nineteen eighteen or something, you know?
If you talk to the folks that actually are, are really savvy, the technology changes so fast that they have to come up with a definition that accepts all these new changes and make sure that you can stay up with the changes. Like if we put it all on a three and a half inch floppy, there's no computers, even take a three and a half inch flop anymore, it'd be worthless. You'd have a cost associated with updating all that into the new thumb drive, or whatever else is coming next to your watch, whatever.
So in other words, you use old, old answers, so that nothing changes.
Exactly.
Wow.
Yeah, 'cause as far as, you know, they haven't, they haven't said anything.
Does, does Google microfilm, do you know? Just kidding. Okay, well, that's fine, I understand what you're saying, I, I just think it's, I've always been blown away by this technology. Seems pretty, pretty far gone. Mary Ann?
I can, I'll you.
Well, I was gonna, did you ask your question yet about the use of interns?
No, I thought maybe that, but I'm not sure when she said needing a full-time person, and like Dave said too. I thought about interns possibly.
I mean, just to get us caught up, I mean, I...
Well, right now, like I said, right now, we are at least two months behind on titles for motor vehicle. I am three years behind on the health center.
And that's not even talking about my stuff.
And that, and that's not even talking about John's stuff with the jury rosters.
What does that mean? How, how long does it take for you to get caught up with a year's work?
Well, that's just it, you know, you have, I have, right now, I have six pallets down from the youth center. It'll take me at least a month to go through and organize all their stuff, because they just throw things. Then we have to go through and we have to take the staples out, we've gotta check on folder folders, huh?
We need to throw them.
There's some departments that are better than others.
They just take, yeah, they just take a bunch of stuff and put it into a box.
I've got it covered.
Now, like, for John, he, he has a department that they, they sort their documents. So then, when they bring us over boxes, we can just sit down and we can just start scanning it. But a majority of the departments that we deal with, we have to prep all their documents. And that's what takes so long, is having somebody to sit, pull staples, make sure that...
Patrick, some, straighten that out.
I will hope to the extent that it's...
Going back to what I said, Mary Ann can comment. Wouldn't interns help, and we get that far behind, not only do you need a full-time, you need some of these interns, we oughta be able to get that from Metro, UNO, or someone, you'd think. Pulling out staples, I can even do that with mine.
Even I can do that.
We can set up a schedule. Noon every Tuesday.
Is there any, any way to increase your revenue, I mean, these departments that, and I know that it takes a, probably, you know, if you ask the youth center to contribute to, you know, five hundred dollars for a big box or something, I mean, I don't know where they get it, but...
The way that the department was set up back in the seventies, and the way that it has been run ever since then, we were just a facility to work for the county.
Right.
You know, so we do not charge any county offices. The city, we've always charged, and as things have gotten, you know...
Well, it does make sense, but I just wonder whether, maybe Joe, if you could explore, you got lots to do, but anyway, if you could explore a possibility of some kind of a fee schedule from the departments that produce, you know, like Mr. Friend's and others, Alexander's and others, that produce all these volumes, that maybe there's some way they could add a dime or something.
That's just taking the county money from one pocket of the other.
No, no, we're charging, charging users. You know, I always said, like, when I was actively practicing law, I mean, if you, I don't know what it was to file a lawsuit, twenty-eight dollars or something, I started. Well, now, I don't, what is it, a hundred and eighty or something?
Eighty-two.
You basically, you could make it a hundred and eighty-two, and I'd have to pay it if I wanna sue somebody.
You basically turned to the state legislature, just like us paying for policies.
And I know, you get involved with, you know, these retirement plans and they go, I'm just saying that if, if I, as a user of your office, if I wanna do something, I have to pay, and unless it's sixty thousand dollars to file a lawsuit, somewhere between what you're charging and sixty thousand, there's a tolerance level there. And someplace, we need to find users to pay.
Than making the county attorney charge than every department that they use.
Well, that's what the Attorney General does, he doesn't really practice. Okay, Mark, were you down there?
Well, go ahead, Mark.
No, 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 I was just...
Going back many years, you might remember when corporations, and I believe the city of Omaha gave people a plug-in unit, you put into the copier, so your department would be charged per copier. So that's essentially what Mike is saying, that the fee gets charged back to the person using it. So we want your department to subsidize the rest of the county by paying for her.
So you have a big sale to finance that, okay? Mary Ann?
Well, I think going back again, that there, there could be potential to use interns for certain parts. There also could be, yeah, I mean, these departments, if you're providing a service to them, then they should be providing their stuff in an orderly fashion. And if they don't, theirs goes sits over there and gets waited until it's done. It shouldn't be your responsibility. So Patrick needs to buck up and make sure that you're getting your stuff in an orderly way. Wait, is he still here? Oh, I thought...
I was thinking, I'm thinking about...
He's shaking his head.
Yes.
Maybe in the corner, I believe.
So Patrick...
I'm not a big fan of the intern, intern thing, because this is prep work. You know, I don't know what kind, I don't know how much of the, from the educational aspect, if, you know, you bring an intern in to, you know, set any type of office where you're doing something that they learn about government, where, versus somebody coming in and they're taking staples out and they're sorting stuff. I don't see, I don't see the University of Nebraska...
You've never worked in a political campaign, obviously.
Uh, you know what? I have.
Well, anyway, my point is, is that if there is a way, instead of adding someone full-time at this point, to get caught up, so we can see exactly where we are then, and again, if the youth center has to come over and organize their stuff, they get somebody from the youth center over there to organize their stuff.
That should happen before it leaves the...
Well, it should, but it didn't, so...
Yes, that's why I saw I'm working on it.
Like I said, normally, when I've gone through, like, for the youth center and stuff, I will start, you know, in with their detainee files, and the files aren't in alphabetical order. They might have manuals, or they'll have strip searches in there. So you've gotta pull all that stuff out, you know, reorganize it, so we know exactly what project that that's actually gonna fall under, so they have some rhyme or reason of how their stuff is.
Let me ask you, why couldn't, in just a thought, Patrick, Brad Alexander, maybe a Mark Bonson, maybe not, they could possibly look at who might be able to help as trustees, and it'd be something they wanna do. Now, you'd have to figure out what you have them do, but it seems like it's good for them and good for us.
Confidential information, that's probably all I have.
Okay, we have two more questions left.
My stuff's full of confidential stuff.
Yeah.
I was gonna bring out the confidential.
Okay, you're through. Question, discussion's done.
All right.
I talked too much.
Yes.
Let's go to the easy one. Okay. The third and final one of the day, thank you, thank you very much.
So you're gonna give up two employees in the legislature, to make things work out for it, is that what I heard?
How about this, I'll just give up mine, so I never have to do this again.
Terry, thanks a lot.
Thank you.
Claire, could you grab me some water, please? Nina, just so you know, after our county board meeting, I didn't see any...
Yes, I heard, yes. We're gonna hold him to that. Yeah.
Okay, your budget looks to be right on schedule.
Thank you.
I haven't seen it yet.
All right, so real quick, we'll, last, we'll do extension. They have eleven budget employees.
Eleven?
Eleven county employees. The current modified budget is four hundred and forty-four thousand dollars. She's about seventy-one percent spent, it's seventy-one point five percent of the year, so she's kinda right on, not expecting a supplement. The only revenue that this gets is the payment in the interlocal from Sarpy County, which is about sixty-eight thousand. And her payroll is about four hundred thousand, so it's the majority of her budget. And I'll turn it over to Nina now to talk about it, with the hope that nowhere in this discussion will we talk about deep frying a turkey.
Oh, my God.
I wanna know what kind of grass you put in the shade, though.
I know why I'm so flattered, because it's like the grand finale, although Nina made print, so I did not need to do my boxing gloves. They're gonna be good, and she does take kickboxing.
Oh, my God.
Anyway, so thank you very much, everybody. I am gonna show a quick, a quick little video that just kind of sums up what extension is and does, and who we were and who we are today, because I know there's been some mis知 words about that, so.
Mention the University of Nebraska Extension Office to most people, and their thoughts turn to rural scenes, row crops, and farm animals. And in many parts of the state, that's still a big part of what extension does. But here, in Douglas and Sarpy counties, it's a bit different. Traditional farms are replaced by neighborhoods, schools, businesses, playgrounds and parks, acreages, strip malls, and even favorite restaurants. Now, with the changes, your Douglas and Sarpy County Extension remains your best resource for research-based information, programming, and support. Extension in the city can be seen in everything we do, for people, schools, businesses, government agencies, and community organizations. As a matter of fact, people are surprised to learn all the things we do. But you shouldn't be, it's the reason extension exists here and across the country. In fact, back in eighteen sixty-two, when President Abraham Lincoln signed the Morrill Act to create land-grant colleges like the University of Nebraska, it included more to provide education and research. There needed to be a way to share that knowledge by extension, the same holds true today. Here, you'll find agreed professionals, experts and educators, who understand how to share this specialized knowledge in ways that do the most good in our community. They're providing research-based information in the areas that impact our community most, environment, food, families, youth, and 4H. We're helping backyard farmers diagnose problems with plants, preparing master gardeners, protecting groundwater, and certifying commercial applicators for safe pesticide use. We're strengthening families through programs that target those most at risk with information about food and nutrition, budgeting, communication, and relationships. We're contributing to healthy eating and food safety, from how food is grown and sold, prepared, served, and preserved. Even our 4H programs are everything you'd expect in a urban setting, in the classroom, after school, and in clubs throughout the metro. We're working on science topics, instilling leadership, promoting entrepreneurship, and teaching new skills to young people. Extension in the city is for everyone, and we make sure all are welcome to take part, as volunteers and donors, as participants in our programs, as partners in our efforts, and as users of the resources we provide. Come be a part of what makes Extension in the City an important part of our community.
So, as you see, one thing that's happening throughout the country, so there's three thousand seven hundred counties in the United States, and Extension is serving every one of those counties.
Three thousand sixty-nine.
Three thousand sixty-nine, okay. Thank you, Chris. He is on the Extension board, he's very well equipped. Yes, I was close. So Extension is serving all of those counties, but one thing that we've recognized in metropolitan areas is the fact that we are very different from the rest of the state, and so there's a consortium nationally called Nebraska, or National Urban Leaders Extension, really looking at what are the targets and what are the focus for metropolitan areas? Because oftentimes, we'll think of Extension as it being cows and crops, and it is that, but it's so much more, especially in a, in a metropolitan area. So you asked us to come up with a mission statement, or what our mission statement was. Ours is helping Nebraskas enhance their lives through unbiased, research-based information. What that means is it's pretty self-explanatory, but I think a lot of times, people don't get the fact that if you go somewhere and you want some, say even Google, you have to really scroll and look at all the fine print and see who's sponsoring the website or the ad or whatever, to see, is it really unbiased? And so I have a couple of situations where, you know, there was supposed to be an ash tree removed in my yard. I work for the Extension Office, but I'm not a expert in trees and grass. But I thought I had to remove this ash tree, because Emerald Ash War is coming. So, got a quote, got all that. Well, I had somebody come up to my house, and they said, what ash tree? So they came there to remove the ash tree. They said, what ash tree did you wanna move? I'm like, well, that one out front is the only one that is like growing and good. And they said, well, that's not an ash tree, that's a maple. So these are commercial vendors that are out there, you know, so, I'm not saying that's true all the times, but that's what research-based, unbiased information means. It means that we have nothing to sell, other than the truth. And so when people come to us, they can bet at the finish of the job. In terms of what we do at our place, we have three different departments. So we have 4H Youth Development, we have Nutrition, Food and Health, and then we have Community Environment. And just to highlight a couple of these, you guys can look for your handout if you want, but basically, in 4H, we have around twelve hundred volunteers, and those volunteers run clubs, they are, we do a lot of train the trainers and the school enrichment programs. In Food, Nutrition, and Health, probably a big piece of our work is with the USDA. So anybody that receives SNAP benefits or food stamps, we work with those families in the stores, in their homes, in the schools, after-school clubs, working with the children on learning how they can prepare their own nutritious snacks, but also working with the parents on how they can budget and when they, in going to the grocery store, and where do they find, if you open a lower shelves, there's, there's more bulk down there, and it's not brand name, and it's cheaper, but it's just as nutritious. And so teaching families how to make the most out of their food stamp dollars. We've also created an app where it has all the farmers' markets on the, on the app. It also has the foods that are nutrition, the recipes that you can make with those foods that are in season at the farmers' markets. And Chris has referenced a couple of times, the Growing Foods Connection, which is a technical assistant brand, that Extension and Norde Depot are, are heading up the steering committee. But with, with that program, then we are looking at other ways, we can tie all the food systems together, so it goes from production to harvest to, to the table. And then in Community Environment, just a couple of little facts, we have two hundred and forty-four volunteers there. We certify their hours, so we track that. They've given about nineteen thousand two hundred and thirty hours back to the community, and if you take that times the volunteer rate of pay, it's about three hundred and eighty-six thousand back into the community. Working with the community gardens, they raised ten thousand pounds of produce, and then donated all that produce to the homeless shelters, so that they have fresh food and nutritious food. So this is kind of a highlight of the three main departments in our office. You guys asked for an org chart, it's in your handout, and it's up here.
That's pretty simple.
It's very simple. It's very simple.
This color code is one.
So the cool thing about it is, and that, so it can be hard and it can be complicated, or it can be easy, and the only way it's easy is if we all work together. So it's pretty cool that across the United States, we have federal, state, and county partnerships. And if we all work together, and, and so to Commissioner Boyle's point earlier, around not everybody wanting their own sandbox, if we all play together, we can create so much more synergy and get so much more impact for our residents, and that's really... much more synergy and get so much more impact for our residents. And that's really what, what I would hope to accomplish as we, as we move into this together. So you guys are the blue, that's who you pay for, that's your eleven. And then, as you see in your color codes, the red's university, we have the federal partners are purple, but basically you're paying for eleven people, and in the blue, and yet you get the rainbow. So that's what we all give, we all come together and work together, and I would hope to keep that moving. One thing that we've done this year is, we said, especially in an urban population, we want to work with issues, so three to five years, what are the issues, what are relevant, what's multidisciplinary, and what do we need to do in terms of getting partner involvement? So through stakeholder and employee surveys that we've sent out, we've captured eighteen issues that we've asked each of our educators and assistants to be on one or three, one, two, or three issue teams, because what our idea is, we don't want to keep doing what you've always done, because it may not need to be done anymore, but we want to do what's relevant and important, that's also in our wheelhouse. And so we are letting the educators and assistants kind of self-select around the issues that they find most passionate and most important in their lives, because we know that they will produce more that way. And we've asked for partner and stakeholder involvement in these, so we're asking for commercial people, government people, city people, et cetera, to be a part of these teams, so that we can address it from a three-sixty degree view, and not just from a state view. And these, I'm not going to go through all of those accomplishments, I just gave you some readings to do in case you're bored or need entertainment, or inspired. But you guys can read through that. They're just goals and accomplishments that we've kind of highlighted throughout the year and where we want to go. So I'll say just a couple of them. In 4-H, right now in our urban area, we reach one to every five youth. And so the goal moving next year is to get one in four youth. We have, we were selected as one of three cities across the United States to partner with Boys and Girls Club, YMCA, and Girls, Inc. The reason that Omaha was selected was because Extension and Boys and Girls Club, YMCA, Girls, Inc., they all have good track record. So they did kind of a private study on each of these organizations. And then they said, okay, well, these are the four organizations that we're going to work with, because they follow through, they answer to their grants, they have good collaborations, good networks. And so then they went and chose cities of where they had the strongest relationships and connections and operations. And so Orange County, California, was one of them, Dallas, Texas was the other one, and Omaha, Nebraska was the next. And so far in Omaha, we've reached more youth than Orange County and Dallas, Texas. And it's really, again, because of collaborations and partnerships, and that was funded out of the Noyce Foundation. Yep?
Oh, sure, go ahead.
So the grant, the five hundred thousand dollars is for?
For the, so we got a Stimmobile, and we have, Boys and Girls Club are the financier, the fiscal agents for that money. But it provided for the staff that we had to hire and train, Stimmobile. So we take science, like, we went down to the projects with the Stimmobile lab, pulled it right up there, and had the kids come in and do science and that type of stuff right there, make chemistry and, and do robots and engineering stuff right on the, in the projects. So. In terms of nutrition and health, I talked a little bit about that earlier, but when we talk about reading, reaching the marginalized populations, our statistics are, are this. So we get twenty-four percent that are a hundred and one to a hundred and eighty-five percent below the federal poverty level. Fourteen percent of our clientele are sixty, seventy-six to a hundred percent below the poverty level, and you can read that. But one of the big parts of this program is to really work with kids and their parents, because we know that when the kids learn, there's likely that there could be sustainability in the home. But where the kids are at is the parents or users come. But we do try to really target only those that are the most marginalized. And that's where most of our federal employees are housed at. And that's what they work with, is just the food stamp, USDA dollars. And then in the environment, health, we have entomology, we have water, we have horticulture in that department. Again, I talked about the hours of certified volunteer hours. Something really interesting, I was going to take a picture of our parking lot when I left today, but I didn't. It was just full of commercial vendors, and they were parking down the street because they're, they have to come to our place to get certified in order to spray, do the pesticide. One thing that Kent Holmes talked about earlier was just about teaching people how to use and reuse their compost, their lawn clippings, not to overspray because it goes into the water system. That's, that's a large, large part of what we do every day, helping people be sustainable, but on a very low budget, and also kind of minimizing, simplifying things so that they're not hurting the environment. So we're doing some other stuff, we're doing, we're going to start doing a lot of online education, so battling with the bedbugs on a budget. A lot of people, like Omaha Housing Authority, we work with them, a lot of, they have a lot of bedbug situations. So our entomologist is working with them and creating curriculum for them and their residents, so that they can understand how bed bugs work on a budget and, and try to get rid of them. Just some more facts that you can read. Real quick, so you know, so each educator and assistants, there's roughly thirty-five of them, they have to be in part of those issue-based reviews. They have to get their own goals and objectives for each of those issue-based reviews, and they have to report to them at the end of the year with a career builder guide and an activity insight. But for me, as a department, like, what do I want to see as my department? These are the three things I'm really focused on. I want to switch our teams from action teams that focused on traditional issues or emerging issues, but I want them to be on issues. So I want them to identify it, they have to change the logic model so it can be done by April fifteenth, and then they need to have their programs up and running, ready to go by September. So the big push, and this is going across statewide, but we want ours in the metro, so we have Washington, Dodge, we have a lot of those regional educators that can come in and partner. So if we're missing any students, they can come in and fill that gap. Advisory and advocacy, as you, some of you know from the Constitution bylaw meeting that I had, had held, I really want our board to go from kind of a working board, still be working, always do more with less, so they have to work, and they need to be advisory and advocacy. So we want to, I've paired an educator with each board member, and I want them to create their own advisory committees. So get out into the community and bring in stakeholders, so that we're kind of knowing what the beat and the pulse is of the city, so that we're meeting the right issues and needs. And then volunteerism is something we do a lot of, we believe in it. It gives back to people, and they give back to the community, and it's a win-win. So we want to really work on teaching and training our volunteers. A lot of times they love to come there because they're passionate about whatever they're volunteering in, but we want them to be educated and to be able to teach and outreach to those of their meaning. So. And you can read, as detailed specific on those goals, if you want, in your handout. So here's the money. Just to kind of give you an idea, I, I want to really kind of point something out. So you guys, when I came on board, we were getting about one point seven, one point eight million from UNL, the state, NIFA, federal dollars. We're almost now, you know, a couple of years later, getting almost two million from them. And I say that to say that it's a match, and so whatever dollar county's putting in, they're getting two dollars back. Now, do you get that in your general fund, and you get that in your budget? No, you get Sarpy County's payment of about seventy-five thousand dollars. But this does come in to the benefit of the community, the residents, and everything that we're able to do together, and I think that can just continue to build and grow. I believe this year, the state was going to bring in about three other assistants that we could have in, and Dave?
Deena, just to, just to edit your comment, when you started, it was one point two million dollars, not one point seven. So it went from one point two, to next year, you're asking for almost two million dollars for you and your group from the university. Worth clarifying.
Yeah, thank you. I was looking for the number one. Thank you, Dave. So, and then in terms of what we are looking at and asking for, as Joe said, we are on target on budget, not going to be asking for anything more. This is kind of what it's going to look like for the Douglas County ass, is about four hundred and forty-nine thousand. That's a flat budget, one point five percent on top of the salary. We operate really on forty thousand dollars in terms of operating expenses. How do we do that? We charge the departments for everything. So they, all their copies, all their paper, all their office supplies, they have to produce that, and they have to come up with that on their own. It's something that comes out of tax funds. So, because we can charge a reasonable rate, and so the reasonable rate, we can justify, say, it has to pay professional development, it has to pay operating costs for your department. So that's how we, that's how we operate from that place. So, and then Sarpy County will be in roughly around seventy-five this year. And so that is, that is what, that was like in a nutshell. So any questions or thoughts?
Scott, um, your youth development component here, as a father of a couple of OPS kids, and esteemed kids, too, could you expand a little more on what your participation in OPS is?
Absolutely. So currently, we're in sixty-six schools. We have met with, as you know, King Science Center, that pretty stuff, kind of looking at what all of they have. Well, and Dave, you can chime in on this, too, because you've been a part of these conversations. We have recently met with Ken Spillman, and he is the career coordinator for OPS. So they were surprised at how much we were involved and how much we were doing for their school system. He, at that level, didn't know. So we are in strategic conversations now of how we can get our curriculum into all of the OPS school systems around science, technology, engineering, mathematics, and agriculture. And so we have a good partnership with Omaha Bryan High School with their agricultural program, bringing in entrepreneur professor from Lincoln to help them, their kids learn, grow the food, here's how you can sell it, here's how you make a product, all the way from getting consultants in there with our staff to say, here's how you build a greenhouse in the most efficient manner. So, does that help?
The other thing, and you referenced the conversation we had this morning on yard waste, and education going forward, to try to get people to understand that they're throwing away good stuff that could be improving their lawn rather than bagging it and putting it in our landfill. That educational effort, are you involved in that?
We are. So we have the twelve community gardens throughout the, the city, and so those are demonstration gardens.
I was trying to read the map behind you.
So we specifically have those demonstration gardens for that purpose. And that's, again, when I said we want to teach our volunteers, we want our volunteers to be teaching people that are going through that, how to do that. Do I think there needs to be more partnership between environment and us? We do partner quite a lot. I think all county and city places, I don't think that we all know what, who's doing what. And I think we need to get to the table, and that everybody needs to have, what are you good at? And that's the part we do. What we're good at is, we teach really well. We get concepts across. So we do tell, we teach.
As far as outreach goes, and this is in my district, so I'm sensitive to it, Earth Day celebration is coming up next month. You participate in that?
Yes, yep. We have master gardeners there, we have our horst staff there. I'm not sure what all they've got planned, but yes.
Thanks, you do great work.
Thank you.
Any other questions? Mary Ann's been texting, so maybe you want to get caught up in something?
Yes, I do. I would like to tell you all, it's a legislative.
No, it's a legislative matter.
I'll tell you.
You're doing a really good job.
Thank you.
Been very proactive.
I was going to do this to you, but I don't, I won't do it.
Okay, you get your money.
Okay. That's the nicest thing that I've ever heard.
I know it, I know it. You've done a great job making progress, another roller commissioner survey. I think that's it, kids. We're going to adjourn. Anybody have any questions, comments, or anything else?
No, but I do, I just want, since everybody's here, we talked about LBE eight ninety-four, and the debate has ended, and it's moved, it's moved on to E and R for the second stage. But what there was, was an amendment, and they, and we talked about the juvenile court and the portment of, of a attorney for every child that's only now in a population of one hundred and fifty thousand or more. So.
Aren't we special?
Aren't we special? That's right.
Thank you, Joe.